Welcome to the Bothell City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. All council members are here except Councilmember Spivey, who's absent and excused. Review, okay, review of upcoming engagement opportunities, which are up on the screen here. I'll just read them real quick. The Bothell Health Walk on April 24th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Arbor Day, April 30th from 10:00 a.m., starting at 10:00 a.m., Stepek Park. Free concert on the City Hall Plaza, Limwood Community Band, May 14th, 3:30 p.m. Sustainamania, June 4th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Oh, that is at the Bothell Operations Center, Capital Facilities Plan Open House, June 15th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. So first thing on our agenda is the meeting agenda approval. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none. The projected agenda? Any changes? Wow. All right, moving right along. So special presentations, we have our annual Recology Cleanscapes update, and I believe Sabrina Coman is going to give us a presentation.
Is this on? Okay. I'm actually not going to give the presentation, but I'm going to introduce Recology Cleanscape staffers Kevin Kelly and Kelly Farren, and they will be giving the presentation to you.
Thank you. I just want to say, Mr. Kelly, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you. I'm very excited about it. Look forward to working even more closely with you all. And thank you, Sabrina, for the introduction, as Kelly and I are here tonight to just report on our first year of activity to the council, make sure you're aware of what we've been up to operationally and more, and see if you have any questions of us. But we don't want to take up too much of your time, but we do want to let you know what we've been up to in the community in our first year of service. So what we thought we'd do tonight is just give you an overview, give you some data points on our collection operations, our customer service, and then I'll turn it over to Kelly, and she'll talk about some of our waste diversion efforts, our community engagement, and how that ties into what King County is looking at now, because I know there's a lot of attention around what they are doing. So one of the things we track most closely, because it's one of the things that's most easily recognized by our customer, is misses in the field. The industry standard and the contract standard with the city of Bothell is one miss per 1,000 customers. Right now, we are well below that trended at a rate of about .1, .15 over the course of the year. And another way to look at that is it's an accuracy rate of 99.999. So we're doing a pretty good job of picking up the cans in the field, and from our perspective, it makes life a lot easier, because that generates fewer phone calls. Customers are happier, because we are doing, at a very basic level, what we told them we would do. In fact, one of the things that we're most proud of is, in the very first week that we began collections in the city, we had zero missed collections, which is almost unheard of in the industry, because you're taking some time to ramp up, figure things out, and learn about the new community you serve. But I think it's a testament to the planning that went into making sure that we got things right for you all. So that's that. This is just an overview. If a customer does have some type of issue, generally what they will do is they will call our call center. That's the most common activity for a resident or business to take if there is an issue, they have a question about their bill or so on. We do get a chunk of emails, but more often than not, the standard is for a customer to give us a call. And what we really pride ourselves on is having that call answered quickly by a live customer service representative and get their issue taken care of very fast. So what you see here is, on average, you're getting your call answered in about 10 to 12 seconds from the time you dial and start ringing. So again, we're very, very pleased with this and hope that the customers are as well. Here's just some of the feedback we wanted to share, because ultimately, the best that we do is with our drivers out in the field providing a service that are the best ambassadors for our company. And what we love more than anything is to get feedback from the customers about how we're doing. And it always surprises me that people will take time out of their day to call and say thank you to their garbage collector, to their recycling collector, talk about the type of job they did for a service. It's kind of just expected as a course of business. So we do appreciate the nice feedback that we're getting, and we really enjoy being a part of the community. With that, I'll turn it over to Kelly, who will share a little bit more about what we're doing on the environmental side to keep materials out of the landfill and to a better use.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Something we're also tracking is the tonnage of all the materials that we collect. So when we collect garbage, we haul that to the Cedar Hills landfill located in Maple Valley. When we collect recycling, we bring that to our material recovery facility, which is located in South Seattle, where we sort and process all of those recyclables. And we also collect organics, which we haul to Lenz Enterprise located up north in Stanwood. So we track the tonnage each month, and this will just give you an idea of where all of these materials are going. So in the black, you can see our municipal solid waste, our garbage. Blue is the recycling. Green is the organics. You'll see across the month, some things differ a bit. Organics depends on the type of year, how much people are out in their yards and working. But our goal is to increase the blue and the green, so that ultimately, they're at least half of or higher than the garbage rate. So we take these tonnage numbers, and we add up our recycling and our organics material, and we divide that over the total amount of material that we're collecting. And this way, we can track our diversion, which means the amount of material going away from the landfill. So each year, we calculate the diversion in each of the three sectors that we serve. In 2015, we were able to meet a 65.8% diversion in the residential sector. In multifamily, we were just about 27%, commercially around 31%. So total across the city, city of Bothell is diverting about 48% of the material. Relative to King County, city of Bothell is doing a really great job. King County has set a goal to reach 70% diversion by 2030. So the fact that city of Bothell is already at 65.8% residentially means they're right on track and doing a really good job. In the multifamily and commercial sectors, Bothell is also relatively doing very well compared to King County. These numbers do look a bit lower than residential sector, and that's very common. There are many barriers within the multifamily and commercial sectors that make recycling and composting materials a bit harder. But because of that, our focus in terms of education and outreach in the following years will really be focused on the multifamily and commercial sectors. Something we're really excited about that came to Bothell in the last year was the opening of the Recology Store here in Bothell. We opened that up in the end of July, and the Recology Store is really a three-stop shop. What we do there is we collect hard-to-recycle items, such as electronics, styrofoam, small appliances, things we can't recycle in the recycling cart, but there is a market for in terms of diverting away from the landfill. So we collect recyclables there. It's also a customer service station. So if any customers have any questions about what goes where, any service issues, or would like to pay their bill in person, they can come into the Recology Store and we'll help them there. The last thing we do is we sell a variety of products that are supposed to help our customers and the residents of Bothell reduce their waste. That means some of the things we sell are either made from recycled content, or they can serve as tools to help the community reduce the amount of waste. For example, items that could help you with your food storage, so your food would last longer. The idea of the Recology Store is to help people become better, more conscious consumers, so that they can think about what their purchases mean in terms of diverting things away from the landfill. This shows the last three months of the sorts of things that customers are coming to drop off at the store. So here, you can see the total number of drop-offs, and then each color shows the type of item that people are dropping off. So these are all the things we accept. As I said before, we have electronics, small appliances, batteries, CFL bulbs, there's all sorts of items that we collect, and then we haul to another recycler. We also collect styrofoam, which we measure in a different way through gallons, and this is one of our most popular items that customers are bringing into the store. We see a huge peak of this in January, especially after the holiday season, but I think our customers really appreciate that there's now a market for them to bring their styrofoam and keep it out of the garbage. We also work hard to stay a great community partner here in Bothell. In the last year, we've been at multiple events, including Sustainamania, Eka Tober, where we host educational booths, where people can come talk to us about recycling, composting, or we can answer any customer service issues there as well. We also provide services there to help reduce the amount of waste generated at big events, and often bring out a truck, so that people can come see how our trucks work, just as they go through the neighborhood. This is something that's allowed us to be a really great community partner, and we plan to continue to be at as many events as we can around city of Bothell. So looking ahead, we'd like to work with the city of Bothell to continue towards King County's 70% diversion goal. This means a focus on the multifamily and commercial sector, and we hope to continue our participation in community events as we go through this contract with you here in city of Bothell. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions? Councilmember Samard.
I just have a comment. I really love the Recology Store. I think that is such a terrific asset for the community, where you can bring your hard-to-recycle items. I take styrofoam there. I took Christmas lights there, found really unique Christmas gifts for the hard-to-shop-for vegan. So we've never had that kind of presence in our community before with solid waste services, and so I think that that is just such an incredible asset with this contract, with your company. And so thank you for doing that. And then one other question is, is your, I forgot what the name of your recycling facility is called. It's got an acronym?
Yeah, it's, the acronym, it's, the longhand form is Materials Recovery Facility, and the shorthand is a MRF.
A MRF?
Yes.
And so can people tour the MRF? Because I see scouts in the audience, and I know that they have probably merit badge requirements that they could, they could complete if they were able to come to a MRF.
Absolutely. So when we designed the facility, we designed it in such a way that we carved out some space for an education center for that very reason. And what we do is, we set aside, is it the third Thursday of every month, for public tours? And so we have a dedicated spot on our website, where you can go in and book a tour, and we just have that as a standing thing, so that, you know, but if that doesn't work for, you know, like a scout troop schedule, we'd be happy to work to accommodate needs as appropriate. So we'd welcome that. I think, as Kelly, and just a little aside here, as Kelly talks about diversion and things we can do, one of the things we have found to be very effective is bringing people to this facility, so that they can understand better the process of recycling.
Yeah, I think the store's really cool, too. Whenever I come in and bring something, I kind of look over my shoulder on the way out to make sure you're not going to say, hey, you can't leave that here. But you always are willing to accept what I bring in, so it's really neat. And the items that you sell are so curious. You can spend 15 minutes to a half hour in there, just looking at each of the different creative items. So whoever does your purchasing deserves a hand, and congratulations. So thank you so much.
Thanks.
So just real quick, I have had so many compliments of your service. I really appreciate that. Not very often, we get compliments from people, and when we do, just for the year that you've been here, there's been a clear difference before and after you guys have started being our hauler, and I really appreciate what you guys have done. Even, I was not joking, and congratulations on the promotion, because Kevin actually met with me when I was a council member, and just to check in. And, you know, I don't get that kind of attention all that often, so I really appreciated that, and well-deserved promotion.
Thank you.
So thanks for all your service to the city, and thanks for being part of all of our community events, too. That's really, that's really big.
Absolutely. It's our pleasure. We really enjoy being a part of this community and working closely with Sabrina, Jaclyn, and the rest of the team here. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope? Okay. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. So nothing was pulled from consent, so I would entertain a, we're going to try out our new voting system, so this should be interesting. We have a motion by council member, or deputy mayor Dewar.
Second.
Second by council member Agnew, to move the consent agenda. So we're going to try, so hit the plus button if you approve, and minus button if you do not. To abstain is the zero button. And it passes 6 to 0, with council member Spivey absent and excused. The next section of our meeting is the visitor section, and this is the time in which people are welcome to come and address the council. We do have a couple of things. You do have a three-minute timer, and so when the yellow light comes on, that means you only have another minute, and when the red light comes on and beeps, that means you're asked to please finish up your comments. A couple of things. One of them is that we appreciate that only comments are addressed to the full council, not individual council members, we're a body. And then the other part is that if there is a question from a council member, it goes through me before you can answer it. So I'll let you know if the question is appropriate for you to answer. The next, the first person is Mr. Tom Burns.
Well, good evening. I'm Tom Burns. I live at 19601, 109th Place Northeast in Bothell. My wife and I have lived in North Creek Heights, or I guess it's the summit at North Creek, for 25 years since we built our house there. And I hate to bother the council with it, but the concern that I'm bringing tonight is around the height restrictions of the homes that are being built adjacent to our property, specifically Parker's lots 13 and 14. Our understanding is that, well, the developer, Toll Brothers, had come around about a year ago and asked the five neighbors that are, that joined the property to sign a height variance sheet. I was not in town at the time, but none of the other people who had them turned them in. And at this point, Lot 14 is, according to my measurements, and I go from the basement floor, or the driveway floor, to the rafters, and it's 39 feet on Lot 14, and they're two stories high, and adding a third story, which is already 20 feet high on Lot 13. And I believe that lot, since it adjoins ours, is, should be a 30-foot high variance, or 30-foot restriction. I contacted Amanda Davis. She said that the builder had not asked for the, for a variance. So I'm just looking to see if we can get some action for someone to at least come out and disposition the height of the two properties, because they will be building two more that are adjacent to our development, and they haven't started those yet.
Okay, great. I'll put you in touch with, you can choose. You can have the city manager, or assistant city manager, but we also have Tom Burdette. He's the community development director, and he's probably the right person.
Okay.
They have business cards handy, and get one of those, and then let us know how it turns out.
Okay, thanks. And Toll Brothers have done a great job with the plat. The Parker's area is very nice. It's just that we're now concerned, I mean, we've lost our territorial view to the south, and the one to the east will go with us next, this next town. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Stephanie Schreger.
Good evening. I am distributing, or I'm having some papers distributed. I'm here to talk about concerns I have about a, it's called a WAD PUD that is going into my neighborhood, and it is a development, and we've already been through the hearing process. And I'm not really here to relitigate anything. I'm just more here to bring attention to a situation that a lot of, that me and my neighbors and a lot of citizens in Bothell are going through. So we just kind of feel railroaded by the process, and I have spoken with Jeff Smith and Tom Burdette, and they've been great. But the long and short of it is, we have a little road that is actually going to be leading into a new development. And if you look on the second page, you can see where it says site, and you can see an orange mark. And if you're familiar with Hall Road, it's like barely a road. And it was deemed an adequate road by the engineering department, and I was really shocked about this. And I went back after the hearing, because I'm not an expert in all the rules and everything. And it turns out that there is an explanation for what is an inadequate road. And, you know, Hall Road has no lights, no curbs, it's got low sightline, it's got power lines that go right to the edge of the street, and it's deemed inadequate road. And it just seems like, you know, well, whatever we can do to facilitate things for the builder, you know, we're going to do. And I think that the city has to be represented, more representative of both sides. I think that too many times, I get an answer like, well, staff has come to the opinion of such and such, and that's the answer. It's not, well, because of this law, or this information, this code, we're going to come to this decision. It's no, it's just based on the opinion. And to me, that's not how you run the city. I know there's a lot of people working very hard at the city. I'm not here to just put the hammer down. But I can tell you that this little road does not make sense to be the frontage, practically the frontage road for a beautiful new community. It just doesn't make sense. And I would, I would have you listen to the recording, but I don't have the full recording. And I did speak with Tom, and I hope the whole thing was recorded. But when I purchased my copy, I only have two-thirds of it, so I can't give you all the information. But thank you very much for your attention, and if you want to have any questions, please feel free to contact me about this situation.
Great. And we do have your, I've received emails from you. Have you sent an email to the full council?
I have.
Okay.
I have, so everybody should have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samard?
It's a question of staff.
Sure.
So, but I see our director's gone, Tom?
Yeah, that's why I didn't go there.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess the question, I know that we received an email late last week about the, about the PUD.
The road.
And I haven't had a chance to read that, but has the hearing examiner given his decision? And so I assume that it's positive to allow the Toll Brother development to go through? The WOD PUD?
With conditions, and I can't speak as to those conditions, just because I don't have them off the top. Gary might be able to. I don't want to put him on the spot, but...
And do the conditions at all relate to the conditions of the road, either on Hall Road or 175th, I think it is?
No, they don't. The, well, the engineering conditions indirectly do address Hall Road, but the hearing examiner adopted the staff recommendation essentially, and the traffic engineer's recommendations.
And so is there, is there, are there plans in the future to address any potential deficiencies in Hall Road and 175th?
You're asking me a question that I frankly can't answer for you. I'm not in the traffic section. But I can tell you that the next step in the subdivision process would be either reconsideration before the hearing examiner, or an appeal of the decision.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, I hope that we are, the city is not in a position where we, where this development goes through, and then at some point in the future, five, 10 years down the line, there's an outcry because of deficient infrastructure, and then it becomes the city's obligation and liability to fix that infrastructure, when that infrastructure should have been fixed as a part of development. And I see that a lot, where, and I think that can be, that can be a source of frustration to the public, is not only do they deal with the impacts of new development, but then at some point in the future, we actually have to pay for it, too. So I'm hoping that I will be proven wrong in the years ahead, and that Hall Road and 175th will be sufficient to handle the capacity, and that we're not going to be paying for a very expensive fix in the future.
Is there any other visitors that would like to provide public testimony or comment? Anybody? Okay, moving along. Old business, so AB 16-068, continued discussion of three items from the 2016 docket and plan, and this is the longest title ever. 2016 docket and plan and code amendments as follows. One, plan and code amendments for the revisioning of the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, including potential plan and code amendments regarding the transfer of development rights. Two miscellaneous code amendments to downtown suburb regulations. And three miscellaneous housekeeping code amendments. Mr. Hassler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for reading the title. I appreciate that. So just to recap quickly, this is part of the annual council review of suggested land use, plan and code amendments, and related proposed actions. And for each item, council decides which items warrant formal initiation and the process path for each. And that path can be referred to the planning commission or other body for recommendation back to council, or retained for direct council consideration, as well as the priority of the item, which is optional, but in this case, staff has asked the council to try and prioritize items where possible. Again, just to recap, council held a public hearing on this item on March 15th, and on that date, council opened the public hearing, received a presentation from staff, took public testimony, closed the public hearing, and deliberated on which items to initiate, whether to assign each initiated item to the planning commission, or to retain for direct council consideration, as well as the prioritization of each item initiated. Council did ask staff to bring back three items. I'm going to go through the first item, which had to do with the revisioning of Canyon Park, and then I'm going to ask Dave Boyd to go through the miscellaneous downtown code amendments, as well as the miscellaneous housekeeping code amendment. We're actually not going to address that third one. We just packaged, if you recall, we just packaged that small one with the downtown amendments. So regarding the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, if council recalls, council asks staff if there were some tasks that we might be able to accomplish in 2016 on a modest budget, without formally getting into the entire plan and code amendment. So we took a look at that, and as you see in your packet, what we're recommending, what we believe we can do in 2016 is the following. We believe that we could hire a consultant to facilitate outreach efforts with stakeholders, and we estimate that would cost about $25,000. We would propose hiring an intern to assist with data collection and analysis for about $7,200. We would propose that that would likely be a planning intern from UW or similar institution, as well as hire Community Attributes International to update the TDR analysis for this Nomish County portion of the city, which we feel would be a fairly modest effort of about $3,000. And that's based on the fact that that initial analysis cost $5,000 to do. This would just be an updating of that. So our total estimate is about $35,000. That's for items that we believe we can accomplish this year. And then, as noted previously, staff would be coming to council with a much larger budget request for 2017-18. I'm going to turn it over to Dave at this point, so that he can run through the miscellaneous downtown code amendments with you.
Jumping right in, the first item had to do with parking. Not to make light of this unfortunate situation, but there were no injuries, and the reading room has this picture on their front window as well. So we have heard that there have continued and increasing concerns with parking downtown. The closure of lots that provided spillover parking has generated concerns, and emphasize the need to review multiple dimensions of the issue, not just the amount of parking that we're requiring for new development, but also how we manage both the on-street and we in the private sector manage the off-street parking. and we in the private sector manage the off-street parking, including enforcement. And we'll be coming back to you, along with Police Department, to address the enforcement side of this on May 17th. Also, there are special parking demands that need to be considered, including construction parking, special events, and transit. So revising the parking requirements needs to really be based on, based on a careful evaluation and a holistic look at all of these issues and the current parking utilization and future forecasts. We, staff, community development, working with Public Works staff, have identified a qualified consultant to help collect and evaluate data on parking demands at a cost of approximately $40,000. And we are looking into ways of reducing that cost by tapping into existing data and potentially using college students to help with counts as we move forward. So, but we do, we are committed to taking a harder look, particularly at the parking Second issue, building height. Your packet included the illustration on the upper right here for the Gateway South project, which is just south of the Village at Beardsley Crossing or southwest of the Village, Village at Beardsley Crossing on Beardsley Avenue. The, the upper image shows what the current height envelope, which follows the slope of the land, would require. And it basically means that the top floor of that apartment building would have to be a single loaded corridor with the side facing the view towards Mount Rainier being the corridor. And it's not an efficient use of the, the building, the building envelope that's available. So the proposed method, well, we haven't actually determined a proposed method, but we're considering, asking council to consider an amendment that would use a method similar to that used in the rest of the city or in the international building code, which establishes an average grade height and then a flat topped box based on that average grade. And the picture on the lower right, which wasn't included in your packet, shows what the result would be on, on this site. This would still maintain special height setbacks adjacent to single-family housing, as you see in the, in the front portion of that lower site slide. And it would also, because most of the single-family, adjacent single-family neighborhoods are uphill of the higher density zoning, the uphill side of the buildings would be shorter and the downhill side would be higher. There are other projects besides this one that, that could be affected. And in fact, I just, we don't have any images, but we just learned that the developer that's looking at doing the hotels on the city hall block is now looking at a modular construction technique, which could drastically reduce the construction impacts and the overall time of construction. But it also adds a little bit of height. And even with the, the additional height that we've added in the downtown core and downtown neighborhood districts, they may be up against that limit. And a method like this would, would probably work better for them in that situation. Another issue that's come up is the density limit in the downtown transition. Like I said last time, this was just considered in 2013 when council lifted the density limit in much of that area, but retained it in about half the area, the area that's cross-stashed on this image. Since then, we've received interest from, in redeveloping some of those areas in the cross-statch. Lifting the limit on those areas would be an opportunity to also add an affordable housing requirement downtown. And many of the developments in those areas are already above the 20 unit per acre limit, so, which basically creates a significant disincentive to redeveloping any of those Then there are a couple of other amendments related to downtown transition development regulations. One regulation is that all buildings must butt or face the street. And we're finding that with townhouse developments, like the ones in these images on larger sites, it's natural to have some of those buildings in the backside of the site, not right up on the street. So that's a fairly minor code amendment. These also raise issues about the requirements for building separation, particularly the image on the bottom right. Here, the developers asking that they be able to put buildings less than 20 feet apart as, as required in the code so that they can have windows on, on the sides as well as the ends of the units. But the code requires a 20-foot separation. And if, if that's the code, when they are ready to apply for building permits, they will just build a, a long continuous building rather than break it up into individual buildings. So we think it's, it's worth taking a closer look at that requirement. The building, the image on the lower right is, is in that downtown transition district with the density limit. It preserves an existing house that's historic register eligible. And by putting the, the buildings on the back of the site helps to preserve that while maintaining the, the street frontage that that house currently provides. And lifting the density limit would allow them to build over that parking area and increase the number of units and provide affordable housing, which the developer has indicated they would be interested in doing. Other, two other downtown amendments. One regarding the limits for canopies and balconies. This was first raised relative to the city, the city hall block hotel that wanted to do a port cochere that would extend out to the curb line of the boulevard. They're now saying that they probably won't do that, and they haven't provided us any illustrations of what they, what they had in mind. But this rendering here of the junction on Lot L shows a second level balcony that also acts as a ground floor canopy, but actually extends further than the code currently allows either balconies or canopies. So this is an area that, that we think might be worth reexamining as well. And then the final code amendment related downtown was an amendment that would simply allow home occupations in the Sunrise Valley View District, as they were in the previous single-family zoning there. So that's that, but I'm happy to answer any questions and going back to any of the previous images, if you'd like.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Sandberg?
So let's see. Why don't we just stay here and then we'll work backwards? So the home occupation code amendment request, how did, how did that come to your attention? Because it seems as though that might have just been a, a check in a column somewhere that didn't get checked. How was it that you found that?
Well, we were asked by a, an app, a potential applicant about that, and we thought, I think the intent was to keep the, essentially the same requirements as the previous single-family zoning in that area, but, and we could also treat that as a scrivener's error, but, and make the change without going through a formal code amendment process. But, but we did want to raise that and make sure that, that there wasn't any, weren't any concerns about allowing that.
And are there, aren't, are home occupations allowed in every residential zone? Or in terms of, they're not allowed to be banned in, in residential, residential areas, I thought, according to state law?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. One other reason for perhaps doing this as a code amendment and not just a scrivener's error is the downtown plan also, in, in one area, in the use table, equates home occupations with live-work units, which creates some confusion. And so this would be an opportunity to, to clarify the distinction between those two.
So is there a different definition of home occupation in BMC versus home occupation in the downtown master plan?
I don't think the downtown plan has a separate definition for home occupation, but the use tables do identify home occupations with live-work units, and they really are two different things.
So what would, if we were to go ahead with that amendment, then the Sunrise Valley View District would potentially see home occupations just like any other residential zone in the city? They wouldn't have, there wouldn't be anything special allowed for home occupations in the Sunrise Valley View, would just be consistent with other residential areas?
Correct.
Okay. And then can you back up to the density limit in the downtown transition area? And so you're, it seems to me that these hatched areas are the same areas that we discussed and declined to move forward with two years ago. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, and at that time, you, you provided an analysis that's, you know, that showed that currently the, the density limit is 20 units per acre?
Yes.
And so then you showed examples where they were currently higher than that?
There, yeah, there are numerous examples within that area that already have higher than 20 units per acre.
And, but, but maybe due to unique site constraints or site characteristics?
I think primarily just due to the fact that previous zoning in that area did allow greater density.
Okay. And then for the building height amendment? So we're thinking about it in the context of Beardsley and potentially the homes that their views would be impacted who live up the hill from Beardsley off of Ross Road. Have any of those property owners been specifically contacted for their opinion, since it seems to be their view corridor that would be impacted?
They haven't yet, but certainly if, if this code amendment was initiated, we would do some outreach.
And then, so with this, this building height, where else would these changes impact? Any of the, the downtown districts?
Well, it would be, it would be a difference, a change in the way we measure heights would affect all of the downtown districts. Not all, a flat site, and there are very few absolutely flat sites in downtown, wouldn't really see any change. The average building height is, is essentially the same as the height from the perimeter. And, and in this case, the, the view blockage isn't any, wouldn't be any different. And I think in the vast majority, or if not all of the cases, the, the views from upland sites would, would not be affected.
Is, is parkers, the new, new development parkers, is that within one of the downtown districts or is it in a 9600 zone?
96, I think it's 9600 and just outside the downtown subarea.
All right. And then talking about looking at parking requirements, so were we, in this code amendment, were we thinking about revisiting the parking ratios again for new development or?
Yes, that would be part of the, the, that would be the one that would be most focused on the downtown plan, but at the same time, we're looking at a lot of other related parking issues.
And so is the thought to decrease the parking ratio or to increase the parking ratio?
Well, I think that the input that we've been getting is that we need to increase it. I think that before we do and before we just settle on a, some arbitrary increase, we really need to do some analysis to get a better understanding of what the actual utilization is in these new projects. And I think we now have enough new projects to start getting a better handle on that and, and seeing what, what sorts of adjustments would make sense. We would also, we've also heard requests, as we're looking at this, to also address the other outlying districts like the SR 522 corridor. We've already made some changes in the general downtown corridor to, to allow a similar method, slightly higher ratio than the downtown core districts. But we're hearing from some developers in the SR 522 corridor that the, the citywide 2.2 spaces per unit requirement that applies there is essentially preventing them from, from developing those sites. So we would want to take a look at that as well.
And so you said you think we have enough examples right now with Village 104, Six Oaks?
Yes.
What else, what other projects are you thinking that would provide the data for this $40,000 or less study?
Well, we'd also tap into studies that have been done recently in King County. So they've looked at, at parking ratios in others, and they're actually updating those, that study right now. So, so we would also go beyond the Bothell, downtown Bothell city limits and look at other similar situations.
Well, I guess I'm not too interested in incorporating other situations because we did that with King County, and we found that King County, other areas in King County are not necessarily a good match for projecting a parking demand in Bothell because we don't have the transit service that other places do. And so predating parking ratios on transit that doesn't exist puts, puts us in a situation where we don't have enough parking because people are still going to have their cars to get around because they don't have transit to rely on. So I, I think if we're going to spend money, we should really be Bothell-centric on, on this particular one.
Yes, the, what we're proposing in terms of the parking study would just look at, at quantifying what's happening in downtown Bothell. What I was saying was that we, as we look at this, we would also look at other communities that are being studied in King County that have similar, that are similar to Bothell in terms of their transit service and, and zoning, similar to downtown Bothell.
And so you also mentioned that you think this $40,000 price can be whittled down a bit?
We think so. We're, we're starting to look at ways utilizing the Diamond Parking Service that's already managing city hall parking and, and using the data that they have and possibly also getting some student work, student work to supplement what the consultants would do.
And so what do, what do you think that the output of the study is supposed to do? I mean, in, in addition to informing policy decisions on the appropriate amount of parking for new development, and then, you know, maybe parking management, are those the, is those the three bullets that you think are going to be, the three bullets on that slide are going to be informed by this study? Or is there additional?
I think there are additional, I think beyond the, some of the sub topics within here, we could use that data to help us come up with a better plan for construction parking, special events, to prepare for what happens in the fall when football night coincides with a busy night at McMenamins. I think those are all things that we need to, we need to address, as well as transit parking, that having better data on current, the current situation is going to help, help us address all of those parking issues.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? So I had, Councilmember Free?
I'll go right after you.
So I had put in, at the dais for each of you, a copy of, so Deputy Mayor and Councilmember McNeil and I met, and we tried to give a little bit better prioritization. I mean, we, we said 2016 or 2017 which body that we wanted to have see it, see these different items. And so we, we made an attempt, and this is just the three of us, so we wanted to see what others thought. But we prioritized what we thought should go to the planning commission, as well as the city council. And you'll see there, this PC number one would be number one through six. And then there's, there's other things too that were in 2017 that we didn't add to this because I guess we were less concerned about when they fit those things in. But this was, one of the things that we did, that we were asked to do was to prioritize, and we didn't exactly do that. So we tried to, to speed up the process to, to bring something to the table for people to respond to. So I'd appreciate if we talked about it at least. If, you know, nobody wants to do that, then that's fine. But obviously, there's a few of us that were interested in prioritizing. Councilmember Free?
Yeah, I'll comment on this first, and then I do have a question for staff. So how you place this, Davina, is it one through six, we already as a council designated planning commission to do those? And one through nine? Planning Commission to do those, and one through nine is for--
I don't think we have designated-- Sorry, I don't think we have designated yet.
I remember--
It's a suggestion.
Okay, I remember we went through, and it's been at least six weeks now, it seems.
You guys are being very nice to each other, but we don't have back and forth conversations at the dais?
Okay, well, it's been at least six weeks, but I believe that we, as a council, went through and said Planning Commission retain, and went back and forth, but I have to go back and look at notes, do you recall? Are you done with your comment? I'm asking you a question.
It's in your packet. It is, it has everything in the packet from the last meeting we had that says where we said we were going to put it--
Is this matching--
Which body it's going to go to.
Is this matching how it is in the packet?
Yeah.
It is?
It provides some clarity about which things we would like to see happen first.
And so the only thing that you're saying here is which one we are prioritizing, not who we're assigning it to?
Correct.
Okay, good, that was an easy answer. So I'm going to go to staff with a question regarding the fees for the Canyon Park planning, and I don't know if you want to go back to the slide, but you had a total, I think, of $35,000, oh, perfect. Hire consultant for outreach services, the $25,000, an intern, and so on. What about when concepts start to be put together regarding certain zonings and stuff? Will you have an engineer or a drafter on board to help put pictures to what the concepts are being discussed?
Well, I think when we get to that point, that's where we'll be coming to council with a larger budget for 17, 18. That's where the larger consultant monies will be needed to help formulate those designs and regulations.
Okay, so at this point, even conceptually, we're able to handle that within our staff?
Well, I think what we would get from the outreach efforts would be to hear from stakeholders, what they want to see, what they expect to see from Canyon Park, and how they would like to see Canyon Park function in the future. So those sorts of outreach efforts.
Good, yeah, I think it's just important, some people are visual, some people are auditory, and if we start talking about different concepts of zoning, it's nice to be able to see the map with those markings on there, and if we had to hire a consultant, I wouldn't mind adding in $5,000 to $10,000 right now, just so you have those tools.
Well, if we can provide basic graphics like that as part of this outreach effort, we'll certainly do so.
Okay, great. That's all I have at this point.
So we could, oh, Deputy Mayor?
So I just wanted to ask staff regarding the letter from Planning Commission.
Yes.
When you talked in the packet about moving things around in order to prioritize clustering, I believe you had mentioned kind of, I guess, putting the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center further down on the list. Is that in response to the, if we were to go with Planning Commission's request?
It is, yes. Essentially, if you look at the matrix, there are a number of items that were mandated to do, and those were at the top of the matrix. So when we looked at everything that was mandated versus non-mandated items, and the staff resources we have, I think it comes down to, in 2016, either doing the outreach efforts for Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, or starting work on the clustering and tree retention amendments. And even then, I think we may be challenged at the staff level to work on both Fitzgerald and the clustering and tree retention items at the same time, because there are staff members who need to be involved in both because of their level of knowledge and expertise. So I think those two things happening, one at the Planning Commission, one at the council at the same time, would challenge us. And again, yes, to confirm that, I think if you wanted to move clustering up, the thing that would probably have to go down a bit would be the Regional Growth Center.
And would you say there's already a certain amount of momentum, because Planning Commission came to us, and we already had a discussion around clustering, and so is that potentially lost if we put it further down on the list?
I don't know that momentum will be lost, I mean, we'll be almost starting that plan, those planning code amendments from scratch. As Councilmember Sandberg alluded to in her email, and that I think you have a response to, we tackled this about 12 years ago, but 12 years ago is quite a while now, things have moved forward a lot, especially LID techniques, so a lot of the early work we did on that is probably not applicable, or we don't have anymore. And I would caution council that, that working on clustering and other land use development tools, as well as tree retention, is a big item. It's not something that the Planning Commission or council is going to get through in one or two meetings, that would be a fairly lengthy sustained effort. So I want to be realistic and just say that we think we can work on the Regional Growth Center outreach, or the clustering and tree retention, and even if you choose the clustering and tree retention, I think that will challenge us to work on Fitzgerald at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? And discussion? Councilmember Sandberg?
What's the process to go through the items, these items that we've talked about tonight? Not the ones that we've already discussed and decided on? Can we go through them one by one, and then get council consensus on those? Because I may have a, I may have something that I don't want to initiate and others do, and it'll be confusing if I take my time and then people have to kind of follow it. So if we could go through those one by one, starting on page 57?
Well, 57, we already initiated a PC in 2016, so you want to go through the whole thing again?
Oh, wait a minute.
Or you want to just go to the pieces that we need to cover tonight? Because--
The pieces we need to cover tonight, where are they?
Starts-- Sorry, I'm scrolling too. Oh, there they are, page 71, so the miscellaneous code amendments to the downtown subarea regulations. So you have a list, starting with item A is possible revisions to the parking provision requirements?
Yes.
So we should probably, do you want to go to that level and start with A, B, C down the line, or do you want to talk in? One of the things the staff recommended was, if we were going to break this apart, we would move A and B forward this year, and the remainder, C through G, if we want to, to 2017, was the staff recommendation.
So I'm comfortable moving forward with A and B per staff recommendation. I do not support removing the density limit in the remaining areas of the downtown transition district. When you see where those hatched areas are on the map, one of them is at the base of West Hill, that abuts 9600 and 8400 square feet zoning, and those neighbors were very vocal during the downtown master planning process that they want, they supported the downtown master plan, but they felt it was important that there was a transition in density between R 9600 and the unlimited density of the core, and that's why we called it the transition district. So I think it's important to maintain that transition for these property owners. This was a promise that was made to them the years ago when we adopted the downtown master plan, it was a compromise, and I feel that it's important that we still maintain that density limit, because there is unlimited density in, correct me if I'm wrong, at least in the red area, which is the downtown core, and is there unlimited density in the brown areas? Is there unlimited density in everything else but the hatched areas?
There's no per-unit density limit, but--
It's building envelope.
It's not really accurate to say there's unlimited density, density is limited by the building envelope.
Building envelope density, yeah. So we have, we have plenty of areas in the downtown master plan where density is only limited by the building envelope, and I think that it was called transition for a reason, and I'd like to keep it that way, so I don't support moving forward with C. And-- I am, well-- I'm not, I wasn't in support of E, which was the reduction in the building, the separation side yard setbacks. But I'd be open to hear what other council members feel on that. And then all of these other ones, I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation, so D on, to defer until 2017, to make space in their work program.
To the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
Okay. And just so, for clarity, on items A and B, did you want those to go to the Planning Commission, or did you want those? One of the things that we have on our list here is the parking provisions, we wanted that to go to council in 2016, but the rest of it was--
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Anybody else want to go next? Councilmember Agnew?
I don't say this a lot, but I have to agree with Councilmember Sandberg. I think we did make a commitment to the citizens in some areas about a transitional area, and we need to abide by that. Not too sure on-- the setbacks. If we do bring it, I want it brought in 2017 to the Planning Commission, but I agree with the other two, I think we need to take a look at parking ratios and measuring building heights.
So I probably should have brought this up, but we also have the other section, now that we've gone through two people. Let's see, what is it called? So we got the one section is miscellaneous code amendments to the downtown, and then we have, I think it's just miscellaneous housekeeping code amendments, and then we need to talk about the Canyon Park, I believe, I don't think we've initiated that. And we've heard from staff that if we initiate that this year, then they, and we initiated clustering and tree retention, they would don't have enough time. Okay, let's just do this one for now, okay. This was scheduled for 15 minutes. Hopeful thinking. Anybody else want to chime in on this? Deputy Mayor?
So I concur with councilmembers Sandberg and Agnew. I support moving forward with A and B, I don't support C, and the rest, I think we can defer to Planning Commission in 2017.
Do you want to differentiate on A and B there, the parking requirements and then the building heights? Do you want those both to go to Planning Commission, or City Council?
Oh, no, I think City Council can deal with parking.
We just need one more, and then we know what the majority says, possibly, okay.
I concur. A and B to council, and defer the rest, looks like D through G, in 2017.
So I guess there's four then, for, okay. So we'll just put it down, okay, so A, City Council 2016, B, City Council 2016, that one's a little fuzzy, is everybody okay with that? And then C as a no-go, and then D through G will be in Planning Commission 2017. Councilmember Freed?
Yeah, I think maybe the only one exception might be F, which could have been dealt with as a scrivener's error, curious how much time that would really take, and if we could address that this year.
F, or?
F, the home occupations.
Oh, that's G.
I have it as F.
You do?
Oh, I'm looking at page four, I'm looking at something different than the rest of you guys. So whatever, if it's F on one or G on the other, the same, it's just the scrivener's error regarding the home occupations.
I just have that, so--
Staff it in as you will, this year.
We can take a look at that, and if we feel that it can be addressed as a scrivener's error, we could handle it that way.
Great, okay, all right. Is everybody okay with that, scrivener's error was corrected without council action? It's without council action, right? Councilmember Freed, that's what you're suggesting, okay?
Well, I mean, staff stood before us in their presentation and said that they didn't want to deal with it as a scrivener's error, that they wanted to bring it to council. That said, I think it could be done rather quickly here this year. So if it's quick enough to bring back to council, then we can do A, B, and G, just not treat it as a scrivener's error.
That's fine, that makes sense.
Is everybody okay with that? Councilmember Freed, does that work for you? Absolutely, all right, we got one down.
And then the miscellaneous housekeeping code amendment, that is the third item, is a very minor code reference issue. We could either tag that on with one of the council items for this year, or add it to the Planning Commission items for 17, it really doesn't matter, it's not time-sensitive. And that would get that item out of the way for you fairly quickly, I think.
This is the residential care facility?
Yes, correct, it's an issue of city versus state definitions, and wanting to be consistent with definitions in the RCW.
And that's the only miscellaneous, right?
Yes, correct. We'd be happy to send that to Planning Commission in 17, if that's your desire, or bring it to you with the downtown stuff this year.
Would you recommend keeping it in with downtown then, or?
Well, we recommended that just to, so that we didn't have separate code amendments that we had to process through Department of Commerce, because even the little ones have to go through their own process if we separate them out, so we thought we'd tag this on to one of the others, and then it doesn't have to do its own SEPA review and its own commerce review and so forth.
Okay. So City Council 2016, sounds like what staff can handle and want to do. Lot of head nodding, okay. City Council 2016, and then the last one? Down the list, nope. Canyon Park, where is that on our list, do you know? Mary, Mr. Hasler?
It's the first item in your staff memo to your agenda bill. I'm sorry, I'm not sure which page that is in your entire packet, but--
68.
So it looks like we already did initiate it?
The direction that I thought we had received was to initiate it to Planning Commission in 17, is what I think I have on the matrix, but then Councilmember Freed asked whether there were some early outreach items we could do in 16 with a modest budget, so that's the part that I was coming back to you with, and this is what we believe we can do in 16. So if council is supportive of that, I think the direction to staff would be to try and find that $35,000 or so to do those outreach efforts in 16. Also, keeping in mind that you may wish to reprioritize clustering and tree retention.
That's right, so you want us to let you know whether we want clustering and tree retention 2016, or we want to, if we did that, in 2016, we would need to move the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center in general to 2017?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
And also, and I will just repeat the caveat, that if you do direct us to work on clustering and tree retention this year, I think we're still going to struggle to do that in a timely fashion with the ongoing Fitzgerald efforts.
I thought it would help with that, maybe, but-- Councilmember Sandberg?
So I guess, taking on the concept of tree cluster, the tree retention and the clustering ordinance, because that seems, our direction on that seems to determine what happens with the Regional Growth Center planning. I am a little concerned about doing clustering and tree retention this year, and I say that because I remember the agony that it was 12 years ago, it was a long, long process, and that's why I asked this question, is there anything that we can dig back up and not reinvent the wheel on, and staff response was, well, you know, things have changed a lot, so that just tells me that it's still going to be a long, long, long process, and so that's why I asked the question, could we, because we have been receiving a lot of public testimony about our tree retention ordinance, and how they're losing big trees as a result of development, and so that's why I asked the question, instead of going down this very lengthy path of a clustering ordinance, why couldn't we revise our PUD, and then, you know, I wouldn't say tweak our PUD, I don't think that's a really good description of it, but revise the PUD to allow for that kind of flexibility that you can, so that lot clustering would be achieved, and then at the same time, revise our tree retention-- And then at the same time, revise our tree retention ordinance to provide for greater tree retention. And so this was number eight. And I thought that, because I proposed that, thinking that that might be a more discreet and defined process. And you wrote back, regarding whether the PUD regulations could be modified, they could, but it's really a policy question that should be asked upfront. Does the council want to see a process that goes, that needs to go through a special process? For example, the PUD. And we just had that with the Wadi PUD, and that's a process that goes through the hearing examiner, or a process that is permitted outright through regulations. So...
I think there are a couple of issues. There's that issue, there's that policy issue. Do you want to adopt land development tools that can preserve open space and trees, but then make an applicant go through a special process to get that, which would be the PUD process? Or do you want to put them in the regulations where they can be taken advantage of outright? I think if we put it in the PUD process, some developers will choose not to use them, because they will simply want to avoid going through the PUD process, both the preliminary and final. In addition to that, if we do put them in the PUD process, I still think it's going to be almost as much work to put them into that and modify the PUD. We still need to go through the tree retention issues. We still need to work through the land development tools to modify the PUD ordinance. So I'm not sure it'd be any less work.
Well, for me, it's a priority to finish Fitzgerald. It's a priority to finish our legislative required elements by the end of this year. And yet, I would like to revise our tree retention ordinance. But I know if we revise our tree retention ordinance and require higher tree retention, we're going to get an outcry that says, well, you're reducing our development potential even more. And so I thought tying those two together, PUD and tree retention, would be a stopgap measure, something immediate until Planning Commission could dive into the larger issue of clustering next year. That was the thought process. And then, I'm sorry, and then alternatively, if we're going to do the tree retention and clustering, if that's what council decides, that's why I had asked the question. Well, could we just have an intern assist with the data collection and analysis this summer? And then as a whole, and probably even have the TDR analysis updated in 3,000, for $3,000, so that, starting in 2017, you could have that basis and then go forward with your $25,000...
I see. I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand your question when you wrote it, but that makes sense now. Yes, we probably could do that this summer. But I think, I honestly believe, having been through the clustering issue once and done tree retention a couple of times now, I really, truly believe that we can do a better job if we can wait to do it in 2017, when we have the full staff resources to tackle it.
The tree retention and clustering?
And clustering.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg, are you ready to yield the floor?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember McNeil?
I just had a question. Has the Planning Commission done any studying or review of the clustering or tree retention at this time?
Not today, not recently, no.
Okay. So do you know what they're working on right now?
Yes, they're working on planning code amendments for the Nike Hill area and South Riverside Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the Canyon Park versus tree retention, not clustering?
Yes. I am in favor of tackling clustering and tree retention this year. Development's going strong, and I feel that we need to have these things in place sooner rather than later. There's a lot of outcry about losing open space and losing trees, and the longer we wait, the more we lose. And so my opinion is to tackle that and put the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center further down the line. We also know that's a big budget item, and we don't currently have it in the budget. I mean, I know the $35,000, but beyond that, I'm not sure that we know where that money will come from. So that's how I feel about clustering and tree retention versus the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center.
Sounds like this one we're going to, so we're going to have to take a vote on each of these, actually. I'd look back at the process, and we need to take an individual vote on each. I'm looking at the city attorney, if that's true. Or can we take them all at once if there's agreement?
If there's agreement, you can do that. If there's agreement, you can take them all at once. Somebody may ask to divide the question.
Okay. So, and that's it then? Does anybody else want to talk about? Okay, Councilmember Freed?
No, I'd like to make a motion to move the actions as presented here in our Agenda Bill, then modified. And I'm trying to get to the page here. Sorry.
Page 71, probably? Is that where we broke out?
Yeah, so I'm going to use the right letters. We're initiating, and Councilmember Sandberg will correct me, I'm sure, A, B, C, and G this year?
No. A, B, and G, not C.
Okay, A, B, and G. And then the other items were going to be pushed to next year. And then item number 10 on here is going to be added to the miscellaneous items this year. I think that's the clarity that was needed. Is that correct?
So and then there's one last part to the motion, and we could just, let's just, maybe we should just do those two. I don't have to tell you. You can do your motion any way you want, but do you want to wait on the Canyon Park vote separate?
Well, I would like to initiate the staff's recommendation regarding the spending of the $35,200 this year. I think it gives us an appropriate jumpstart to 2017's work.
Do we have a second? The motion is made and seconded, or made by Councilmember Freed, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to, how do you put that in realistic terms? Item nine, miscellaneous code amendments to the downtown suburb area regulations. Councilmember Freed would like to move A, B, and G to initiate in 2016 to the City Council. All other items to, or whatever, all other letters to be, include, okay, all other letters in this item to be moved to the Planning Commission in 2017. And then the miscellaneous code item to...
Number 10.
Was that number 10? That was to the City Council, though, in 2016?
Yeah, and added as part of the miscellaneous item, so it could be under one SEPA.
Right. And then he'd like to initiate the Canyon Park outreach campaign in 2016.
That's right. And all other items as depicted on the Agenda Bill regarding 2017 and Planning Commission or City Council. Yep.
Okay. Motion is seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm still unclear about the status of clustering and tree retention.
I think we could take that as a...
This is going to be separate?
I think we should just stick to the three, if we can handle this.
Well, then I'd make an amending motion, which is to move forward with the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center planning by working with a summer intern for data collection and to update the TDR analysis, but hold the consultant outreach efforts until 2017.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Duer, to do what? To the Canyon Park?
To essentially, I mean, move forward with the Canyon Park planning, however, to postpone the hiring of the consultant to facilitate outreach efforts until 2017. And the reason why is the bulk of our planning will be in 2017. And I hate to, I hate to, you know, do a, have a consultant report, let it sit for six months, and then pick it back up again. However, we would want to hire that intern to do the data collection, because that's a summer project, that if we wait until next summer, then that's, we're behind the ball there, and then we have somebody who can do data collection along with the TDR analysis. I just, I would just hate for outreach efforts to sit stale for many months.
Any further discussion on the amending motion? Deputy Mayor, did you want to speak to your second, or?
I agree.
Councilmember Freed?
Well, I won't be voting for this amendment. I think it's important to get a jumpstart on items that are such a big item as this is. And if we push everything into 2017, I don't think it allows us proper planning. This is a way to soften the beach and gather information from the public, what they see important in that area. Also, wonder what the intern would be doing and who they would be reporting to and what data they're collecting, if we don't have a consultant that would be working with them. So my support would be to move forward with this $35,000 this year, to make sure that we are softening the beach for next year.
Any further discussion on the motion? Does everybody understand the motion? Okay. Councilmember McNeil?
I will be supporting the amending motion. And I just want to, is there possibly a point of clarification?
Oh, yeah.
So the, there's three, there's three different bullet points in front of us, and I think Councilmember Sandberg is saying that we're going to hire somebody to do analysis, and that would be the intern, that would be the $3,000, or, excuse me, the $7,200. So we would be eliminating point one to $25,000 and point three to $3,000. Is that correct?
Eliminating them or moving forward with just those?
We're moving forward.
So to move forward with bullet points two and three in 2016, and then with the idea of moving forward with bullet point one in 2017 as a part of the larger coordinated effort.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm not going to support them, any motion, probably more so about the underlying motion, but the, so personally, I don't think we should initiate the Canyon Park study until 2017, when we're able to look at our budget. We've got a few pretty critical budget issues around the fire department, and then some other issues that have come up in our recent meetings. And, you know, even $70,000 at this point, I'd like to weigh that in consideration with the other things that we need to balance in our budget. So I'm going to be voting no on the amending motion. Any other discussion? All right, we're going to use our buttons again. So yes means you want to support the amending motion, which is to move forward the portions that Councilmember Sandberg has pointed out in the initiating the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center outreach campaign. Go ahead and place your vote. Vote passes six to, oh, wait, one second. I'm looking at the wrong part of the thing. The motion fails three to three. You still have the floor, Councilmember Sandberg, if you want to make another amending motion? Nope, okay. So the main motion still is on the floor, which is to initiate the, I'm trying to get the names right here, the downtown suburb area regulations, to initiate A, B, and G in miscellaneous item 10 in the list to City Council in 2016. All other remaining items would be going to the Planning Commission in 2017, initiating the Canyon Park outreach camp, I'm just going to call it outreach campaign. Any further discussion on the underlying motion, Councilmember Sandberg?
So clarification, A and B initiated to council in 2016, C, do not initiate, D, E, and F to Planning Commission in 2017.
That's not the motion that Councilmember Freed made.
Okay, never mind then. Oh, then I guess I'll make an amending motion. So my amending motion is to remove C from the list. So C would be a do not initiate. And I think for clarity, I'm going to, because from what I hear up here, so the amending motion would be to remove C from the list and remove the, all of the items for the Regional Growth Center. Can I do that?
Sure. Do you, so the motion is to amend by not initiating item C in the downtown regulations and also not initiating the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center? Do you not want to initiate it, period, or you wanted to defer it, or? You said do not initiate.
Do not initiate in 2016. I want to pull it out from the motion, because I want to vote on, well, you know, actually, let me rescind my motion. I made my amending motion. Because I'll just vote no, because I don't want C in there.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Do we all know what it is? Okay. All those in favor, and never mind, I don't have to do that. Go ahead, place your vote. Motion fails five to one with Councilmember Freed in the affirmative. All right, so do we have another motion? And we, maybe we should perhaps try taking this off at pieces at a time, just saying, it might be simpler. Councilmember Sandberg?
Small piece. I move that we initiate items nine, A, and B on page 71 of our Agenda Bill regarding parking provision requirements and building heights. So initiating A, B, and G, which is home occupation Scrivener error to City Council in 2016, and to defer items D, E, and F to Planning Commission in 2017.
So we have a motion, and it's by Councilmember Sandberg, and a second by Deputy Mayor Duer, to initiate A, B, and G of the downtown suburb area regulations to the City Council in 2016, not to initiate item C, initiate items D, E, and F to the Planning Commission in 2017. Oh, we already had a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Councilmember Freed?
I'd like to make an amending motion, and that would be to add item number 10, which is the residential care facility definition. We heard from a lot of people last year.
Second.
Oh, okay. Moved by Councilmember Freed, seconded by Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Duer. And did you want to do that to the City Council in 2016?
I think it's so simple, we could take it right here.
So that's City Council 2016?
Right.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the underlying motion to add item 10 on our list to the City Council's 2016 work plan. Any further discussion on the item? Amending motion? All right, let's vote. Vote passes unanimously with Councilmembers by the absent excused. Underlying motion? Any further discussion on the, underlying motion? All right. Oh, Councilmember Freed?
I'd like to make an amending motion, and that would be to add in the outreach for the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, as put forward by the staff of $35,200.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
That's on the floor. Do you want to make another amending motion?
Nope.
Okay. So the underlying motion still is, item nine, A, B, and G to City Council in 2016, D, E, and F to Planning Commission in 2017, and not to initiate item C. I think we're done talking. Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Hang on one second.
Vote again. Please vote again. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers by the absent and excused. And the last item on this agenda item is the Canyon Park outreach. Do we have a motion on that item?
Can you say last item? To me, staff has asked if we're going to, if we want to move forward with clustering and tree retention, we have to put the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center planning off. And really, the preference was to, based on staff resources, what I heard was to do tree retention and clustering next year anyway. So when I look at what's before us, that Planning Commission could complete clustering and tree retention in April and May, I don't know if that's realistic. I don't know, and I don't know what they're doing right now. Once they finish Nike Hill, is there anything pressing on their agenda?
Well, we don't expect them to finish Nike Hill or South Riverside for at least another meeting or two, but probably by mid-May. We would have to seriously look at staff resources and determine whether we could staff Planning Commission for clustering and tree retention in April and May. I think that would be a big challenge for us.
Because I want, I want, we all want Fitzgerald to be done. That is our priority. So do you think that clustering and tree regulation could come post-July? Because July is our tentative date for completing Fitzgerald.
Possibly, yes. Again, I still think it would be a challenge for staff in 2016, but we will do what we can if that's council's direction.
Still looking for a motion on the Canyon Park, and we can include the tree retention discussion, clustering and tree retention discussion in that as well.
Then my motion for the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center planning is to move forward with the summer intern data analysis position and the CAI, I think that was the acronym, TDR, analysis. That would be a total of, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it was $10,200.
Do we have a second? Was that the end of your motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was the end of my motion.
Okay. We do not have a second?
That's fine, my feelings aren't hurt.
Yeah, good. Still looking for a motion, though. Another motion.
This is my first time, I don't know how to do this. I would like to see clustering and tree retention in 2016 and defer Canyon Park Regional Growth Center action until 2017.
We have a motion and it's by Deputy Mayor, Council, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to defer the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center to 2017 and pick up lock clustering and tree retention in 2016 to the Planning Commission. That wasn't very clear, was it? The Canyon Park Regional Growth Center into the Planning Commission in 2017 and clustering and tree retention to the Planning Commission in 2016. Is that correct?
Yes, I forgot to mention the Planning Commission part, but I, that's my intention.
Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I will support the motion, but I want, I'm hopeful that council will be sensitive to all of the other code amendments that we have before us and that tree retention and clustering can only be started after staff has completed all the work they need to do and Planning Commission regarding Fitzgerald. So that, that becomes, the clustering and tree retention becomes prioritized after Fitzgerald and after our other required elements that are due by the end of 2016. So that's my hope. It's not in the form of amending motion, but that's what I will be looking for when I'm supporting it.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember McNeil?
I will also be supporting the motion. I had a point of clarification. I wanted to find out, is the Fitzgerald stuff going through the Planning Commission at this time, or is it coming straight to council?
It's coming to council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freed?
I would make an amending motion, but it failed in the prior motion. And I really think it's important that we move forward with outreach this year. We found with downtown, with the outreach that we did several years ago, we got a lot of the public involved, and it was a very positive process, and it did take time. And we're always faced with these documented items each year where we're talking about how the year is pressed and staff has a lot on them. And so I'm trying to continue to say that we should soften the beach by having an outreach program this year. I think that's a good investment. We're finding with our downtown area that with our $100 million investment, we're seeing $300 million of private reinvestment within our city. We could see that duplicated up in the Canyon Park area. So I think that the planning that could be done up there could be jumped in advance, but the motion has failed already, so I won't do it, but that's my wish.
Any further deliberation on the motion? We're done. Okay, go ahead and vote. And the motion is to, everybody knows what the motion is?
Can you just restate it?
Okay. So we would have the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center to the Planning Commission in 2017 and have lock, sorry, clustering and tree retention go to the Planning Commission in 2016.
Can we reset the vote? It doesn't let me revote once I voted.
Can you clear the, okay?
Thanks.
There we go. Passes with Councilmember Freed in the negative and Deputy, or I'm sorry, Deputy, I keep saying Deputy, Councilmembers by the absent and excused. And that is the end of that really long agenda item. Moving on into, do you guys want to take a break before we start the study session? Because it's a 50-minute study session. We're almost up to our break. Yep, okay. So we'll take a 15-minute break and we'll be back at, what time is it? Oh, let's call it five minutes to eight.
All right, the Bothell City Council is back from recess and now we're going to move into AB 16-069, which is a study session regarding the top 10 roadway congestion improvement projects. And with us is Sherman Kong.
Sorry.
That's all right. Take your time.
Congestion. Yeah. Okay. All right. Good evening, council members. We're here tonight because last summer during the council review of the comprehensive plan projects, council requested staff to identify the top congestion locations in the city. So to begin this effort, we first had to ask the question, what is congestion? And found it was a little bit difficult to define because the perception of congestion for somebody who's traveling to the grocery store at a two-minute wait at an intersection is, you know, very different from somebody who has to commute an hour to go to work every day. So the simple definition is when too many cars are using a roadway at the same time. And the federal highway definition is when in excess of vehicles on a portion of roadway at a particular time results in speeds that are slower or much slower than normal of free-flow speeds resulting in stop-and-go traffic. So we know that traffic congestion is one of the top concerns of Bothell residents from the survey we conducted last year. And there are seven causes of congestion, of which we can address two of them through improvement, roadway improvement projects. First category is traffic incidents, collisions, and breakdowns or construction activity and weather, inclement weather. Category two is a traffic demand where the fluctuations in normal traffic is not definable. It's just some days are, everybody wants to drive, maybe a Friday before a holiday weekend or something like that, and the traffic is just high. Special events such as sporting events or concerts create congestion. And the two that we will address with our program here is the physical roadway features where traffic control devices and physical bottlenecks are what we can address in terms of congestion on our roadways. So to identify where the congestion occurred, we started with projects that were meant to address congestion or add capacity in our roadways. And these projects came from the six-year transportation improvement program, the current one, capital facilities plan, the transportation element of the comp plan, council comments from various different meetings and discussions, input from our own staff and Sonoma County staff because they maintain our traffic signal control system here. So they are very knowledgeable about where congestion occurs here. And then finally, public comments. The way we start to rank, the methodology we use to rank the projects was developed using criteria factors that were objective and quantifiable, and they addressed congestion relief. So the first one is the 20-point criteria, included what traffic volumes were on those roads, how many hours of congestion there were, and the level of service at the critical intersections. 10-point criteria was collision history, accidents. Five-point, the five-point criteria were transit and non-motorized freight supportive improvements, those projects that helped in any of those categories there. And the most points you would have scored for any project would have been 85 points. We just wanted to mention that the final scores that we resulted from our analysis does not necessarily determine the recommended order for funding construction, however. And other project considerations for construction funding really are what the budget available is so to leverage project funding. What's the ability of the project to compete for grant opportunities? Consideration of phasing potential for the project to obtain funding incrementally for like larger projects, for example. And finally, project readiness. Do we have enough information to construct a project or do we need to do more pre-design work? So I'll give you a couple of examples. The first example is the Bothell-Leverett Highway 228th Street intersection area. There's more than 25,000 vehicles a day traveling through that intersection, so we got the most points, 20 points. Congestion period, it's congested all day, so again, 20 points. The level of service E, 16 points. Level of service F would be the maximum point. Number of collisions based on accident history, one, one to 1.5 accidents per million entering vehicles, only that results in three points. It, the intersection does have transit route on it and a planned BRT route, so it received the maximum points for that, which is five. And there aren't any new non-motorized facilities on that, in that area. There are some already exists, but we're not adding any, so that receives zero points. And the Bothell-Leverett Highway is a T2 freight classification highway, so it received three points for a total of 67 points. So that's your first example. The second example is at the intersection of 240th and 35th over in the North Creek area. Traffic volumes at that intersection is between 5,000 to 10,000 ADT, so it received five points for that. Congestion period was only evident in the AM and PM peaks, so it received 15 points. The level of service at the intersection, however, is F, so it did receive 20 points. Very little collisions, so it didn't receive any points for that. There is a transit route that goes through there, but it is not a, the intersection only supports a movement for transit, so it was a minimum, but it received one point for that. There aren't any new motor, non-motorized facilities as part of that project, so zero points for that. And there are no freight, it's not a designated freight route classification, so it receives zero points for that also. Total of 41 points as a comparison to the previous project. So processing this methodology through the 30 projects that we identified resulted in the top 10 congestion improvement projects shown here. And at this point, that concludes my presentation, so if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them for you.
Well, thank you for doing this. Is there any questions from council? I have one just real quick, so that map is not the same as the one in our packet.
The maps that were included in the packet were, since this presentation has been postponed a little bit, we, the ones that were included in the original packet were the top 10 for intersection, intersection projects and top 10 for corridor projects. And this one, just for the presentation here tonight, it shows just the top 10 in combination.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember McNeil has a question.
So I was curious on the 25,000 trips per day.
In the first example?
In the first example. Where are all those trips coming from?
Well, that's not even, that was just the maximum range of
Okay.
the grading system that we employed. So that actually, that area actually carries probably more in the range of like 40,000 trips a day, and that traffic is primarily on the Bothell-Leverett Highway. But 228th also carries, you know, upwards of 20,000 to 30,000 ADT.
Okay, and do we have, is there any studies that we have or things we can look at on kind of where our traffic is coming from? How it's kind of moving around or through?
Based on the comprehensive plan, travel demand model that we used last year and for our update, we have a pretty good idea, you know, of where the majority of our traffic is occurring right now. But to identify exactly, you know, where the traffic is going and coming from would take a different, you know, element of analysis that, an origin destination, if you're looking at a specific location, but we're not, it's an expensive, you know, analysis to do, so we haven't done that unless there's somewhere particular that you want to analyze and to determine that, that traffic destination.
Okay, and then the non-motorized in both examples you showed, is that referring to like bike lanes and things like that?
Correct. Bike lanes or sidewalks or pedestrian crossings, those are the three elements of non-motorized facilities that we were grading in terms of projects.
And so when, and so when you grade a sidewalk, how would you grade a sidewalk in that example?
So five-point maximum for that. If you had, if you were adding a sidewalk to, if it was a corridor, let's say, if you were adding sidewalk to one side, it got a, it received a point. If you added to both sides, two points. If you added bike lanes to one side, another point, two sides, you know, four points altogether for bikes and sidewalks. And then if it had pedestrian crossings as a part of the project, then that received the fifth final point.
And do either those two examples require, should they have sidewalks in non-motorized lanes?
Both of those projects actually already have those facilities, so there's no, there isn't any proposed non-motorized facilities with the project itself that we identified, so we're not, it wasn't, it wasn't adding to something, you know what I mean?
It's existing.
Yeah, exactly. If it was, if it was an intersection that didn't have it and we were adding sidewalks and bike lanes, for example, then I would have, would have given it, given it some points for a non-motorized facility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Councilmember Sandberg?
So of these top 10 or 12, how many of these are in our, are planned in our capital facilities plan currently?
That's a good question, I think. I'd say at least eight of those are already in our capital facilities plan.
Because the idea of this exercise is to help inform us when we get to the capital facility plan process and talk about what money is available, what federal grants are available, and how competitive different projects are.
Right, and I would, I would still suggest that we utilize this study to help us determine which ones should be funded, not only because of the ranking here, but it's just a tool for you to use in terms of ranking projects for funding, you know, just as much as, like I said, the other, the other measures of, you know, looking at how it competes with other projects and, you know, can we incrementally fund a project? And, and really even the first project itself is not a specific improvement, it's really a design, it's really a planning effort first to determine what, what improvements need to be done. And that is not, for example, in the capital facilities plan, I don't think.
And so like if we look at, for example, at 10B, which is the stage three improvements on 522, I know that is a part of our capital facility plan, it's on our traffic impact fee list, it's a really big portion of our traffic impact fee list.
Right.
So it, it got ranked, let's see, it's So it, it got ranked, uh, let's see, its score was fifty-two compared to the highest score, which was sixty-seven. So it's a pretty good score.
Right.
Um, and it got, and I don't have, I can't, it's hard for me to flip back and forth between the two tables, but, um, it got twenty out of twenty. I think on the first criteria, which is.
Volume.
The volume of traffic, the average daily trips. So is that number, or is that, um, that criteria just, um, based on, on, on a number? Of average daily trips, or the ability for that number of trips to pass smoothly through that section? Because, you know, a roadway can be large and have a lot of average daily trips, but if everything moves through smoothly. Then it wouldn't need to be improved, so.
Well, like we, you know. The, the, the challenge to define the congestion, we wanted to pick criteria that was, was quantifiable, so. The traffic volume is, is something that is definitely, you know, measurable and, um. And it's very important because it serves, it, it's a gauge for us to determine if this improvement will serve. How, how many people will it serve? Not just the amount of cars that are on the road, but, you know, how else are you going to determine? Who benefits from this improvement and to, in our thinking is that. The, the volume of traffic will definitely be a gauge of how many people would benefit from this improvement. So that's how we use, that's why we use that criteria.
So this ranking isn't really how bad a particular area is. It's more of a reflection of how, what kind of impact that that improvement would have on the transportation system?
Well, the other criteria, level of service, is definitely a gauge of how bad the, the, you know, the congestion is actually, so. Um, and, and as well as the number of the hours of congestion where, you know, some places, it's only. The only congestion you see is maybe even in the AM peak hour only instead of, it's not even e- evident in the PM peak hour, so. We kind of use those ga- we kind of use that criti- you know, criteria to, to kind of come with a, a combination of, of thought process to. To make it a. More comprehensive, you know, grading system without being too complicated, you can, you know, otherwise you can develop, you know. You know, a system that's so, is just too complicated to try to, you know, employ with everything.
Well, and I mean, I, I can, I can see where one of the, you know, the criteria is, how many hours of the day is it congested? You know, if it's congested all hours of the day, or if it sees high traffic volumes all hours, oh, all hours of the day. Then you would expect a higher ranking, but, but then the reality is. Even if a road segment was just bad in the AM peak time, that's when people are traveling. You know, they're traveling that direction in the AM peak time. Um, and then, you know, the reverse in the PM peak time, which is, um, kind of what happens in the downtown area when people are trying to travel. Um, south through downtown on a hundred and second. I mean, it can have a huge backup, and even though that only happens one time during the day. That's when people are traveling, that's when they experience the traffic, and that's when they complain on the survey that traffic is bad. Because they don't really care about traffic at noon, so.
Right.
Um, so can you talk a little bit about why downtown circulation was ranked sixth?
Um.
I mean, like when, I mean, we can see on the, on the, the chart. But what? What does downtown circulation improvements, um, encompass?
The, um, that project is really looking at not only a hundred and second, but what to do. In the downtown in general, not in, you know, the core basically, and what do you do with the traffic after you. Allow it to get past the choke point right now on Main Street. And that's the bigger, that's the bigger project that we have to look at. It's not just, you know, adding one signal to make something go smoothly in, through an intersection. Because it just moved the problem, so. The, the downtown circulation improvement project really is going to be a, a greater study of the downtown core.
Is something like a, a downtown circulation project, is that something that could be added? To the capital facility plan and then to traffic and traffic impact fee program? Uh, i- if it, if it could make the argument that it was adding capacity in some sense?
Uh, I think you could, I think it could be added to the capital facilities plan for sure, and, you know, in terms of. Uh, traffic impact fees, you know, they just have to have a nexus to, to capacity, it can't be a. Safety concern or some, something like that nature, but, you know, this is definitely, this would definitely serve as a. As a capacity type of related project that would have a nexus that would allow you to. I believe you would allow you to, to, uh, collect traffic impact fees towards.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions from staff? We're supposed to provide some direction, I believe. We're not supposed to take a vote, it's a study session item, but it said. Uh-oh. Provide feedback.
We're looking, Mayor, we're just looking for, you know, support from you to continue to use this methodology. If you felt, you know, it produced what you're looking for. That we can continue to use this in developing the capital facilities plan and continuing to use it as a tool. And then ultimately, you know. Uh, believing in it and that we, you know, should start allocating some funding towards studying, you know, what we're going to do about. The more congested locations in the city. That's, that's kind of really all we're looking for at this point.
Okay. Councilmember for you.
Great, well, looking for support, I support you, Sherman, I always have, always will.
Thank you.
Uh, you're a good member of staff, always positive, always bring a lot of information, you've been helpful for many years. At least ten now, is that right? I'm trying to go back. You used to be with Parti- Engineering?
That's right, ten years there.
Out of Everett, uh, understanding, very well-respected agency, and we're glad to have you here. So I'm, I'm looking on, uh, attachment two, which I've highlighted with all these little marks on here. What I found, found very interesting is there's several of these items within the rankings of one to thirty-one. Obviously, the thirty-fifth widening that serves five thousand people total, uh, is thirty-three million dollar, uh, budget line item. So I see that maybe never happening in our lifetime, but who knows, you never know. Then I look back up to the top where you're ranked one, we don't know the cost of that yet, but just the pre-design is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Imagine that's going to be a considerable line item. So then I start thinking, well, can you make efficiencies in what you choose? So then I go down to number three and see that that improvement for the two tw- two hundred and twentieth street. And SR five twenty-seven that's serving twenty thousand in volume, you could, uh, do some improvements to that for six hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then number six, uh, is yet to be determined, but just above that, you have two fourteenth, which carries a very high volume. Of the improvements for a hundred thousand. It's interesting, you could pick off just four or five of these are far less than others and maybe raise the service of the city substantially. So it may be that we're not following one to ten, but you, as you go down the list, you find several that have. High traffic volumes and level of service scores that need improvement. How do you not just focus on the ten and have this big plug that never gets removed and you could satisfy a lot of different areas?
Right, I, um, you know, as we were discussing this whole methodology, you know, the, the, I think. What we can get from this is that if we, depending on what you're funding and what your budget is available. Maybe there are things that we've identified here that rank high, but low cost, and maybe something we can address.
Low hanging fruit, right? You guys said that to each other, Steve and you always use these terms back at the office. Perfect, well, I mean, hopefully the capital facilities plan and, and you as staff can look through those and obviously. One through ten, because those are high levels of service that need to be addressed. But there are some of these lower hanging fruit that maybe we should be focusing on that could improve some areas significantly. I also think of, um, certain roads within our city that we may not want to improve because you want to direct traffic. In a certain direction to other areas, do you ever have that consideration?
Um, there are, but I, right, now I can't think of one right now.
Yeah.
Honest with you, but.
I know cut-through traffic in West Hill has always been a concern, if we considered improving one of those, that would just potentially increase on cut-through traffic. Because people are trying to get around the tolls now of four oh five in other areas.
Right.
So you have a lot of different things that you have to review that are, I'm glad that you're here and glad that you and Steve and your staff can work together on it, so. You have my approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh, I want to thank you, this is a great primer for a new council member who's on the CFP committee. Um, I really appreciate the information and, um, I, I actually, council members freed, council member Freed's input, I think, was, uh, valuable in terms of low hanging fruit. Um, so I'd be interested in seeing what, or hearing, I guess, what the next steps might be.
Well, we'll take this back, I think, and we'll, uh, with your support now that we can maybe come up with some strategies and see. With the development of the six-year plan and, you know, the capital facilities that, e- even if it's in the draft form to. See how this fits and, you know. Understanding already that even the top five projects here are all within one corridor, basically on the five twenty-seven, where is our biggest problem right now? And, you know, if we can somewhat prioritize those, or at least, you know, come back with some recommendation later that. You know, we can, uh, put some funding towards studying that and at the same time, making some improvements that. We can benefit our, benefit our, 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 our residents there in that way.
Any other comments from council? I had, yeah, okay, I had a couple, so. So we asked for this prioritization or this, you know, the, the development of this matrix, and I just want to make sure, so you do feel like it's, it'll be a valuable tool in prioritizing CFP projects? Or, you know, road projects?
Definitely.
Okay. Um, the other thing too, so you just mentioned, uh, State Route five two seven is, you know, our worst traffic situation and. Uh, Deputy Mayor is going to a meeting next week with Washdott, they have actually told so much that they have a surplus of money and. I'm hoping we get some of it because of the impacts that have occurred to our city, um, because of the four oh five tolling. So I just, um, just wanted to throw that out there, that potentially armed Deputy Mayor with things to go into this executive board meeting and, um. Start demanding some, um, relief from the four oh five tolling would be probably really helpful, um, for her argument to, to get that money. To, to the city of Bothell.
I look forward to meeting with her and to discuss the background there.
And then so, so this will be used, I'm sure you have another ranking process in the capital facilities plan, that might be more so about, uh, Steve Morikawa's presentation next. So is he going to talk to like how this fits into our current, actually, it's not the CFP, it's the transportation improvement plan, so.
He probably could, could give you a little more information on that.
But thank you, though, this is very helpful, it's, it's, uh, it's very responsive to the community and how we can connect what we're trying to do back to their priorities in their survey, I think is. Uh, time well spent, so I really appreciate you guys taking the initiative and creating this thing, it sounds like, out of thin air, so, uh, it's great, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Any more comments? Okay, thank you, and next we have Mr. Morikawa for AB sixteen dash zero seven zero. It's a study session regarding the six-year transportation improvement program.
Okay, good evening, so Sherman started you off by kind of talking about congestion a little bit. And I'm going to take it a little further by talking to you a little bit about the six-year tip. The six-year tip, though, is not, it's a standalone process, but we also have other processes in the city. So what I'm going to try to do is kind of wrap it together to kind of let you understand how we feel this process, process should move forward. And give you a little bit idea of, um, prioritizing projects, um, how we get them on the CFP. How we would determine which one would be funded, some of the issues you might want to think about. Again, this is the first, um, TIP study session, and we're going to have, uh, uh, at least one more before we. Talk about adopting the current, um, TIP. So what I'd like to do today is talk to you about what the tip is, what the requirements are. Familiarize yourself, y- you guys with the actual current one, so that we can start talking about the next one. Uh, propose actually a revised process for clarity and streamlining. And then go over the next steps, what will happen over the next couple of months. So let's see. So what's the tip? The tip is a planning document that outlines what transportation projects the city plans to work on over the next six-year period. It's required by the RCW. Um, the tip must have a public hearing and be approved by the council at least annually, so once a year, prior to July first. But it can be revised anytime with a public hearing and council approval. So you could approve it in June, end of June, but you could come back a month later and revise it if you really needed to. It's a planning document, um, it's not a funding document. So if a project's on the six-year tip, that doesn't mean it's funded. It must go through a process typically through our capital facility plan program, which is the CFP process. To get selected and to get prioritized and then to get funded. Uh, the CFP itself is still a planning document, it's still not a funding document. But what happens is the CFP is done every two years, the same year that the budget is done. So the CFP kind of starts early this year, the staff already started work on it. The committee is going to kind of see it towards summer, and then the council will adopt it in the fall sometime, just before the budget. And then the budget will reflect what that adopted CFP, um, you know, the two years you guys adopt the budget for. That would be in your budget, and that's the funding document itself. So tip is planning, CFP is planning, budget is the actual funding document. So the last reason why a six-year tip is important, other than the state requires it, is because some grant agencies require it before they will give you a grant. So you want to have projects on there that you think you might get grant money for, so that the grant agency can look at it and say, yes, you qualify for this grant. So what you've been looking at up there is a six-year tip that's been adopted. It's essentially a list, and it has six years of estimated expenditures. So ideally, it's supposed to tell you what the city is going to spend, uh, money on over the next six years. And this list gets, um, sent along with a resolution to the state, and it's a requirement of every agency. Um, for city purposes, what I'd like to do this time around is essentially attach a map to this. And we've been working on project descriptions, so there would be brief project descriptions to put on a website or for public information and that kind of thing. But that wouldn't go to the state. So this is the list that's in your packet, it looks almost identical, but the second column basically gives you project types. So it talks about sidewalks, it talks about capacity projects, which kind of is like congestion. Talks about economic projects, it talks about safety projects, condition projects, so. Everything we build eventually will have to be rebuilt. So condition basically means it's got to be redone, replace a bridge, replace a road, that kind of things. And then there's combinations, so like the crossroad was an economic project, was also a capacity project. Gave more volume, more capacity for traffic. There are programs included, programs are basically, um, work that needs to be done, that's not one-time only. So paving program, we have to keep paving every year, bridge inspection and maintenance, we do that every year. Sidewalk replacement or installation, we do that every year. So those are not one-time money, so those are, um, programs that will always be there. The programs also give us kind of an opportunity to prioritize projects, so like we talked to you at other meetings, we have a sidewalk prioritization. Sherman came up with the congestion prioritization. So these programs allow us to determine which projects have a highest priority. And we try to be objective about it, because again, like Sherman said, it's very difficult when you say, what's the worst congestion? Well, in everybody's minds, a little bit differently, but from the staff point of view. Our job is to tell you which projects would have the most beneficial impact and improve congestion of the best. We also have studies, excuse me, studies and planning. So Sherman kind of talked about a little bit about this, and as an example, before we did the crossroad project, we didn't know what we would do. We knew we had a problem, but there were many alternatives that could be there, we could have put a huge roundabout. We could have done a couplet, or we could have done what we finally did, which is realign the road, which I think was. Or we could have done what we finally did, which is realign the road, which I think was alternative G, I think. So there was many different alternatives that needed to be looked at, a public process to go through. So that's kind of the pre-planning that um, Sherman's talking about. Before you can define a project, you have to do a little bit of work to get to the point where you know what you're gonna do. And then you can go after grant. Excuse me. So the last slide is the one that's in your packet, but it's got highlights. So the yellow highlights, the one that I think I did it right, are funded. The unhighlighted ones are not funded. So it's kind of confusing because we call it a six-year tip and yet only the yellow ones are gonna be worked on in six years and the other ones are not. So to the public, it's a little confusing and we want to address that. So here's kind of what we want to do. So currently, like I told you, the CFP and the budget are two-year cycles. So in the CFP year, which is the budget year, ideally, we would start working on the tip early in the year because it has to be adopted by July first. But the CFP process takes almost the whole year. So they don't really line up very well. And when we go out for public um, input, it gets a little bit confusing. And then you guys got to adopt the tip before you've seen the CFP and prioritized it. So it doesn't really make sense. Um, so what we'd like to do is we like to have the six-year tip and the CFP have the same public process. So every two years, we do a very robust public input. We request people to submit things that they want to see. Um, and then we go through the CFP process to prioritize it. Using that process, I'd come back in January and say, here's the projects that you prioritize transportation. You're gonna fund through the CFP in the next six years. The tip's gonna reflect the exact same thing. And then we would submit that to WashDOT before the July one deadline. So it does a couple of things. Um, it allows us to use one public process. Um, you might say what happens in the off year. In the off year, we would still have to adopt the tip. We could update it if something came up, like a grant opportunity, we had more funds than we thought. Emergency project came up, we could still update it. But transportation projects typically don't take only a year. They take a year to design, a year to get right away, a year or two to build. So this doesn't move fast enough that every year you probably want to revisit the whole tip all over again. So this is kind of what we're proposing. One more slide. Let's see. A little bit too far. And then the last thing I would propose is how the tip looks. So again, the current tip, half the projects are not funded. So the revised tip would basically be about half the size. It would be matchers, CFP. What we're proposing though, that you have a little bit of a gray area. So we get grant cycles every year, every two years. And what you want to do is to make sure you're positioning yourself to be able to apply to a number of grants. You're not gonna get them all. So you apply for twelve grants, you might get six. But you want to have your six-year tip and your CFP reflect those projects because you want to be eligible for them. So we would recommend you provide seed money or match money for whatever projects we think we want to go for grants for. If we don't get the grants, we just don't work on the project. And there's gonna be a little bit of estimating there because you have to put enough money to assume you get a certain amount of grants. So that's kind of the gray area. So, but we think that would be a good idea. Um, that was one of the benefits of having such a large tip in the past. You could go after anything you wanted, but again, it got a little bit confusing for the general public. Some other projects that we recommend putting on would be projects where we might get money, but we're not sure, like Sound Transit Three. There are several projects, actually two or three on your top ten. So SR five twenty-two, two B, um, stage three and the intersection, one eighty-fifth and Birdsley. Yeah. So those are all in ST three. We recommend putting that in the CFP in a six-year tip. We might not have money, but ST three might have the money and they'll see it's a priority for you. We would talk about, when we go through the CFP process, we're probably gonna talk to you a little bit about putting in some money for planning. So Sherman talked to you about five twenty-seven. That's a lot of money to do five twenty-seven at once. But what we need to figure out is what we're gonna do in all those intersections and, and that roadway. Once we define what we're gonna do, we can figure out what we can phase and what we want to prioritize. And then we can go after grant money. So we do need a little bit of effort to get to the point where you define a project and you're ready to go after grant funding. So I think one of the grants we put in this year was for, excuse me, a planning. What is it called? Corridor planning study for five twenty-seven, from five twenty-four to five twenty-two, federal money. And it would allow us to go in there, figure out what needs to be done, go through a public process. And then we can chop it up into projects and then we can go after grant money that would start designing it right away, construction, start the sequence. The last thing I guess I would say is the projects that we don't put on a six-year tip, that we can't fund, we can keep on a separate list. We don't need to prioritize it, there's no money for it. But we can keep it in a list, call it whatever we want to call it. Snow County calls it design needs report. And it'd just be the list so we don't forget about those needs that we think that don't rise to the top. So we'll continue TIP, CFP outreach this spring. Um, I'll come back on June seventh with a draft six-year tip. It'll look as close as I can to what we think the CIP, CFP will look like, but it's a guess. We would ask you to adopt it at late June. We go through our CFP process this fall. You guys would adopt that one. I would come back again in January, revise it to match exactly, and then we start our revised process from then on, every two years. That's what we're proposing. I'd be happy to answer questions. It's kind of a far-ranging kind of thing.
That's good. Thank you for, uh, so it does say that you want us to provide direction as well to, to you.
So, yeah.
About your proposed, okay.
So if that's acceptable, I'd come back at the next meeting, probably define the process a little bit better, but generally that's what we're kind of proposing to do in order to make it um, streamlined. One process for CFP, six-year tip, and then the public sees a six-year tip that actually is a six-year tip and not a bigger wish list, basically.
So since I have the floor, I totally support your uh, idea and I think the, I mean, I've done this for a while now and yeah, the TIP has always been confusing. It's this huge laundry list of stuff to keep uh, updating and uh, makes a lot of sense to me to bracket it down. Also makes a ton of sense to put um, grant matching funds into, program those in because if you don't program them in and you need to match, um, things get pretty dicey. So I, I really do like that idea as well. And thanks for bringing this concept forward. I think it'll streamline the, the process for the CFP as well as the TIP. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. Um, I, I like the idea of what you're proposing, which is matching the TIP and the CFP process together. Um, and then we'll just have to get on track next year um, with that. The one thing I, the, the one concern I have about um, taking some of those TIP items out, you know, that, that are maybe too much of wishful thinking and putting them on a junior list somewhere is that, you know, and then maybe they get relegated to the, to the hopper that never happens. Um, and so, I mean, I, I understand that the TIP with its laundry list of items can be confusing, but it's always a way to, to keep some of those far-off projects still in mind. I mean, I've always kind of thought of the TIP as the witch, as the wish list. And then when those projects get more definition, it's like they graduate up to the CFP list and get funding. So um, but I understand that the TIP list, if it's long and lengthy, can be confusing to the public. I have a question about how, what do you think is the best way for the public to submit their ideas for uh, TIP projects or CFP projects? When we talk about having a public engagement process, what is the, the best way for them to, to participate? And, and what kind of information do you, do you need or do you like to see in kind of helping people flesh out their ideas on adding items to these lists?
That's a great question. We're evolving in that area on how best to get input. We've tried several different things with mixed results. I think the latest one was Barbara put together um, social media and we got probably the biggest hit off of that one. So we have a number, I'm thinking fifty, sixty plus.
So the comment period or the collection period for public uh, submissions for the capital facilities plan closed, I believe, on Friday. And we've received over seventy requests on our online form this year, which is, I think, unheard of in, in Bothell's history. So I got a lot of response from folks on that. And it was thanks to social media. We pushed it a lot. We had an open house that was as, as typical, not very well attended, but um, I think the, having the availability on the website and for people to go on their own time has really, really helped us in our process.
Great.
So I think as we, we're, we're learning how to do this better and I think that we will get better at this. We're even looking, you know, we've looked on Seattle sites and you can see they've had, have a lot more people than we do. They have a huge report on just their outreach program and it's interesting to see what's successful and not successful for them as well. So I think we'll get better at that. In terms of information, information can come in any form. I mean, somebody can just say, I want an overpass, I want a crosswalk or that's enough. Um, it helps to tell us why, um, I saw an accident or I see a lot of kids crossing and their parents have to be with them, you know. So it helps to give us more information, but it's not critical. Um, most of our staff, you know, a lot of our staff has been here a while. They're pretty familiar with most of the areas and if somebody says something, Sherman typically goes, oh, I know that corner and he understands the problem. If they give their name and number, we can contact them and get more information if we need to. Um, I think the big thing will be with these, you know, out of seventy, if there's some duplicates, let's say we have forty-five new projects. We probably will have to go through that and see what's reasonable, not reasonable, good idea, not good idea, and then go through the CFP process with all that. And that's in addition to what we already have that we are proposing, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or direction to staff? Councilmember Reagan.
Uh, I'd support the recommendation. I think uh, streamlining it is a good option. The one thing I saw in here, the, in Sherman's uh, presentation, he had a lot more on two twenty-eighth. And two twenty-eight seems to be a, a little bit of a nightmare. I didn't realize how much of a nightmare until I tried to drive up and see my son who lives in Mill Creek at about five o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, it was pretty impressive. So uh, and I think we've heard a lot from people that live up in that area that they'd like to see some, some improvements there. But I definitely support what you're saying, Steve. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, all right, that's it. Thank you. So um, CD attorney's not here, so I imagine we don't need to have an executive session. Good. Do you want to do a city manager's report? No? All right, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember McNeil, second, anybody want to second it? Second by Deputy Mayor, all those, oh, I guess we can vote. Go ahead, hit the buttons to vote, to adjourn. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passage unanimously. We're adjourned.